I'm going to call the regular meeting to order. First item of the Mashpee Public School. I'm going to, first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mashpee Public Schools recognizes and honors the many generations of Wampanoan people who lived and have sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. I want to take just a second for a moment of silence for recent path in regard to the memory of Nolan Barr. All right, thank you. I hope that we don't have to do that again in a long time. Okay. Next item of business is ratified the agenda that's presented to you for July 1st, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I hope you've ratified the agenda for July 1st, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Kelly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Just to make sure, are you taking notes?
I am.
Okay.
I didn't know until about four seconds ago.
We're checking the minutes since Sherri's gone.
Brian, you made the motion, who's second?
Kathy.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No. Hope you catch up here.
I'm good.
Okay. Next item is public comment. All right. I do want to use that though for, we do have a couple of communication items. I received an email from Marie Stevenson asking whether it be possible for her and Marie Blackburn to be included on the school committee agenda for September 18th. We are interested in working with you on future initiatives relative to anti-discrimination efforts within the Mashpee community. Thank you, Marie Stevenson, Chairperson of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, and Maria Blackburn, Mashpee liaison to the Barnstable County Human Rights Commission. Second item, and I just want to confirm that everyone did receive a email from Victoria here, was that in?
There were two.
Yeah, there were two. Second was an additional add-on to the first. I'm just going to paraphrase, paraphrase, but her email's in regard to the DEIB data analyst role. She did have a question in regard to the overall qualifications and whether or not we would consider adjusting those in order to promote more equity and representation. The other item was in regard to the anti-bullying task force, or whatever we're going to call it, and just offering her support.
Mr. Chair, may I share one additional? And I don't know, I had an additional parent reach out, and I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it now, or when we talk about one of the items, but...
Is it relative to one of the agenda items?
It's kind of like their personal story that they kind of wanted to share and a concern about. It ties into the DEI role, so I don't know if it's really that, or again, if I should hold on it. I can hold on it, but I found it to be very...
I would, we don't have specifically the DEI role on the agenda, so if you want to go ahead and share it.
Sure, I was hoping to get the, I'm not able to get the Wi-Fi in here, isn't exactly cooperating. But I had a parent of a Quashnet student who was a school choice into Mashpee, who is now leaving Mashpee due to the recent everything that's been going on, but also due to incidents that happened in his classroom. The parent shared with me his end-of-the-year essay, which I thought was very interesting to hear the student's voice of what his experience with items that had been said to him throughout the year regarding race, regarding different things that he witnessed in the school. And I know the parent and the child, and I don't believe it to be hyperbolic in any way. It was really more heartbreaking what I read and what I've said, what I, the conversations I've had. So I guess I just wanted to bring that to light. And in talking with this parent and talking about, you know, as we move forward, the parent did recommend that we really try to find programming about active bystander, which I know we've done some active bystander training, but really reinforcing that within the staff and faculty and ensuring that, you know, it's coming from the top down, as I know it has been, but really trying to reemphasize that because I wish I could get this essay to load so I could read it. That was my intention, and I totally forgot to load it before I walked into the building. So I'll share it though with the committee once I get back to where I have a better Wi-Fi signal. But basically, it's just kind of pertains to a lot of what we're here tonight to talk about. And I feel, you know, hearing it from a student who experienced it from a teacher shows that it, there's so many dimensions to this, and I guess that's what I would like to, for us to all keep in mind, that it's not just like a one-dimensional thing as we have this discussion tonight, that it's systemic and not just the schools, but, you know, and we'll get into that as we talk about some of these other agenda items, but I just wanted to bring that up tonight because, again, I had a lengthy conversation with the parent yesterday. A good conversation, but also kind of a sad and hard-to-have one, but one I think we all need to keep in mind as we continue this work tonight. So thank you.
All right, very good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had another, I had a parent reach out to me also, same type of situation. He is a biracial student, and they've had numerous radical incidents that they've had to deal with within all three of our schools since he was in preschool. So again, like Kathy was saying, it's not just a one thing. She, her, she reached out because she would want, she wants to know as a parent of a biracial student who is also adopted, how she can be involved in what we're trying to deal with. She was one of the original members of Mashpee's DEI committee. When it was first started, unfortunately, due to her schedule, she had to leave, but now her circumstances have changed. She wasn't sure about how to go about volunteering, reaching out to us whichever way she can. But again, her son is going into, he's going to be a freshman, which we know that that's not an easy step to make. That's probably one of the most difficult years of your high school career, and he is very nervous, very nervous about what he's going to come back to, seeing as what he got last year, and frankly, his answer to the questions that I always talk, I talked with him today, I cried for about two hours because I could only imagine what this child is going through, was our schools are worse than they have ever been. So whatever we can do to help our students and our staff deal with these things, I think looking at how the community came together unfortunately through the tragedy that we had this past week, I really do think that we have a strong community and a strong core group of people that are willing to help us in however we need it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from June 17, 2024.
Minutes approval?
Second.
Motion by Kathy, second by Kelly. Any new discussion? Hearing none. Kelly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. All right. Under new business, organizational review is brought to my attention by the superintendent and a desire to rename or recast some positions in the school. And I will, I believe I shared that with everybody, if not, I'm mistaken, I probably did, but if you would like to explain what you're thinking.
So it was specifically looking for consideration to relabel two positions within the leadership team, so we have a Director of Student Services that I was recommending or recommending you explore, re-titling as the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. That is not an uncommon title in multiple Massachusetts districts. And it's very, yes, it is person-specific, and obviously you are the people who hire that Director of Special Education, as it is currently called. So you can consider that as you move through, but in the case of our current person where she has her doctorate and she does beyond student services, she has provided professional development, co-taught professional development, she has stepped in managed buildings when we needed to, so I think the scope of what she brings to the district would warrant that title. The other one was our Director of Finance being also an Assistant Superintendent for Finance. Same sort of scenario where Ashley Lopes has definitely proven herself and goes above and beyond in an expanded role. She has made herself be connected with our students, which is not common for that role. Also, the other reason being in the, for these two particular people, they are young in their careers, they have many years to go. I know both of them are licensed to be an Assistant Superintendent and a Superintendent, and that is their long-term career goal. And this renaming, sort of for others in other districts that they may be interested down the road in shifting to see that more as essential leadership that they've been part, which they are very much part of our leadership team. So that was just a suggestion for you to consider, and that's all.
Any thoughts?
So, I'm sorry, Patty, what would Janie's...
She would be the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Instead of the Director of Special Education?
Well, right now, she's the Director of Student Services. It's, both of them are currently considered directors, so it's sort of elevating that title.
And what does that, what does that title come with?
It doesn't, as I told the chair earlier, there is no change in compensation or benefits. Their current contracts would remain unchanged except for the title. In terms of evaluation, the current Assistant Superintendent does not evaluate those roles. So in terms of a hierarchy, I evaluate those people, and in terms of our leadership team, they are truly equal partners around the table with our Assistant Superintendent. When was the Special Ed Director changed to Student Services? I feel like I missed that for some reason, and I didn't know she was... When we, actually when Dr. Curly was hired, I think it's Director, we changed the job description, so it may say Special Ed and Student Services, Student Services isn't the title. That one, I guess I understand, the Director of Finance is an Assistant Superintendent of Finance. I guess I don't know that I've seen that too often personally, but I guess I defer to the rest of the board. I feel like that one, I don't know.
So who... I thought the same thing, did Kathy. I thought, I thought her title was, she was the Director of Special Education.
Yeah, so she's the Director of Special Education Services. It's just preliminary conversation.
Your thoughts?
I mean, if this is just a preliminary conversation, I would rather see it be an item where all of us are here to address it, for Dan, but also to get insight from the new superintendent that will be taking on this role. Respect what the current superintendent is bringing to us, but if we're going to change up organizations and stuff like that, I'd like to have their input as well, so. Just to see if it's something that they've done in his previous district, or what the recommendations would be as well.
So her title on our website that everybody sees is Director of Special Education.
Or her contract says Services and has, and look up the job description.
But I'm telling you what the public sees, the public don't see her contract. So if we change somebody that's supposed to be the Director of Special Education to something else, when we pull up our webpage, it says Director of Special Education. Student Services and Special Education to me is two totally different things, totally different things.
I understand what you're saying, but in the education world, they're not. But I was just going to see what... I think to your point, Kelly, we could probably work on the website's organization, and you know, yes, you'd have a Special Education part of the website where Dr. Curly would be listed as the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education Services or Student Services and Special Education, like maybe combine them. Something that, I understand what you're saying, people might want that, what they're comfortable with in their terms. I mean, we live, like, I hear what you're saying, but I think also we need to make sure we're reflecting current standards of what is going on in the education world. So I hear what you're saying, and maybe there's a way to work around it, that you go to the Special Ed page and she's listed there. I don't know, a preliminary discussion, I think Brian's right, I think we table this to the next meeting where all five of us are here to have the discussion, maybe get some feedback from Dr. Curly, I don't know if she has any input on...
I just see Student Services and Special Education as two totally separate things.
In the field, it's not all. Like, I was a Special Education Director, sorry, I shouldn't have asked. Is that okay?
Yes.
I was a Special Education Director who became an Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and my job didn't change. And that was in West Bridgewater where I was before I came to Mashpee, but what that allowed me to do, I didn't get any more money either, or any other benefits, but what it allowed me to do was to expand sort of my resume, but also my experiences with curriculum and with, you know, school committee things and things that I hadn't had a chance to do. But I didn't take on more work, I didn't, it was really more reflecting what I was already sort of doing. But the two things are synonymous, I mean, Dave, you can speak to that too.
So Student Services covers everything that's not an academic service, basically, so normally counseling, nursing, special education, you know, those sorts of things that are not the core academic curriculum structures. I mean, it's pretty common to have Student Services, right? Most of that job is special.
And I think it comes down to how we market it, for lack of a better term, if we're able to communicate clearly, you know, this is in the world of education, and if we're talking professional terminology, which we should be, and we should be acknowledging current terminology, but to Kelly's point, yes, parents are going to think one thing, but I think it's all in how we put it out there. I guess it's my two cents, sorry.
My initial concern was what we call in the, in the business world, title inflation.
Optics do come into my mind as well, but...
Right. Because if what you're doing doesn't change, but you get a bigger, more glamorous title, yeah, it looks, it looks good on a resume, but every time I've ever looked at a resume, it didn't focus too much on the title, I focused more on what the individual was doing, because titles are a dime a dozen, and, you know, you can call, call yourself whatever you want to call yourself. But, you know, if the competitive world has moved, you know, and if we were, if we had to replace an individual, would we be looking for, you know, an Assistant Superintendent of Student Services in today's world versus a Director of Special Education Services? I, I don't know, I have to defer to our education people in regard to that.
I think that's why I tried to sort of capture that it was sort of person-specific in this case, because given their career goals, there could be a likelihood that these individuals won't stay long-term with Mashpee because they, that title allows them to achieve a career goal sooner than later in terms of...
I can speak to, when I left West Bridgewater and came here, they hired my replacement as a Director of Student Services. So it went back to the Director, because the person that they were looking for, that they didn't have any more money to spend, which is like one piece, but the person that they were looking for really needed to fill that role, not so much as a partner with the superintendent, which is what I had been there. So just keeping that in mind, that it's not a forever thing. I'm not actually giving you feedback on whether you should do it or not, that's not up to me, but the other piece I just wanted to add was, that I lost, so I'm going to stop there and just say it's not a forever, it was not a forever thing in West Bridgewater.
I mean, my experience has usually been if we, if we change someone's title to recognize an expanded role, then there was one, a new job description that reflected that, and there was also a reassessment of the compensation associated with it, because by right, if you're doing more than what your original job was, you should be recognized and compensated for that. And so I think that's, needs to be a part of the whole process. And if we go down that route, then that would be what I would be recommending.
Can I add the one thing I thought of?
Sure.
Which was, you said in the business world, the title doesn't matter, you just look at, and I can tell you in the education world, that is absolutely not true. The title is everything. I mean, who you are, how you work, how you interview is important too, I don't want you to think it's not, but the title opens doors for you that you wouldn't have closed in, in maybe with the Director line, so I remembered.
No, and titles do matter in the business world, I don't want you to be misled, but lots of times you'll see, you know, supervising, senior manager, you know, and it's like, what the heck is this, you know, they have a 15-letter title, right? And you have to figure out what exactly it is that they're responsible for, because, yeah, we did that, you know? If we were concerned, we would, could elevate someone's title, that was cheap, right? But in my opinion, if we're going to, if we're going to look at something like this and recognize people's expanded scope and responsibilities, we should do it the right way. At least that's my opinion. Any, any other thoughts? It sounds like this is something we'll table till the next agenda then. All right. Next item of business is in regard to unfinished, or specifically assigned and unfinished business. We talked about a citizens' petition regarding a town reading warrant to establish a No Place For Hate Committee. And I believe Kathy and Brian were going to work on something, I don't know where you guys got.
I mean, I had drafted some stuff, we created a Google Doc, Kathy and I, we also reached out to Jay Marie Stevenson as the Chair of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee to get their input as well, I think that's what triggered them to reach out. I think at this point in time, we might have something, but there was some requests that had come up about whether or not No Place For Hate Committee would be an appropriate term, or if it's something that we want to deal with. I believe that might have come from Mary Wagon reaching out about some controversy that might be behind No Place For Hate. And then the other thing was, upon finding research, it looks like in 2011, under Superintendent Bradshaw, there was a Mashpee Cares Committee that was established. Then at the time, Selectman Michael Richardson was involved in the organization, and it kind of fell apart, but the Select Board did vote to establish this, and had talked about who would be on this particular committee, and kind of what their charge was. So our recommendation was to reach out to the Select Board to see what the charge was for us to come back, to see if it's something that they could just brush off and we could add some input. It looks like the list from 2011 was Mashpee Police Department, Superintendent's Office, the Fire Department, Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, Public Library, Human Services, and Council on Aging. So it looks like it was going to be comprised of nine members, but when you go on the town's website, you don't see anything about this committee still being active, so rather than reinvent the wheel, we thought it might be better to just approach the Select Board because they can put articles in anytime up until, so that was our, I don't know, recommendation. I don't know if Kathy had anything.
No, I think Brian captured it. He sent me the information on the Mashpee Cares Committee this afternoon, and I think, you know, between what he drafted, which I felt was very strong, and I, we kind of agreed, let's hold on that for a moment and see if we can get a little bit more information on this Mashpee Cares Committee. If it has been dissolved by the Select Board, perhaps we at least have a charge to work off of, that we can then, you know, resurrect in a sense, and like Brian said, kind of look at the composition of the committee, make sure it has the players that we feel are important to be included in these conversations, and, you know, rather than reinvent the wheel, take something that was there and maybe improve upon it. So like Brian said, I echo that request to follow up with the Select Board, Town Manager's Office would probably actually be the better route, go to the Town Manager's Office and see if we can get a copy of the charge for that committee, and maybe even kind of, if there was any talk at Select Board meetings, get some of those minutes and review what the discussions around that committee were, and then go from there. And I think that probably makes the most sense and is the best use of our time, I think, because if something's already out there that's kind of a skeleton, we can just build off of it.
So I guess my question is, so how does, I don't know what Mashpee Cares, what the charter was for you, but how, how do we think that that differs from the Inclusion and Diversity Committee and their charge? Well, I guess I'm trying to understand, what's, what's the difference?
So this one, from the charge from the article, it looks like on August 25th, 2014, the Select Board voted unanimously to make this organizing, this organization an ad hoc advisory town committee. Its focus was on social issues such as substance abuse, bullying, crime, and poverty, and that's just what the article had mentioned at the time.
It's possible to your question, Mr. Chair, that, that it is a similar setup, and perhaps there is overlap between the committees, and I think that's why looking at the charge for both committees would be helpful. Maybe we do need to look at both the MD, what is it, the MDIC and the Mashpee Cares, and maybe see if they overlap, is it something we figure out how to work on? I know Superintendent DeBord, you were... I mean, I don't have clear recollection, but the Mashpee Cares, I remember being part of that as the principal, and I feel like it was something that Ann Bradshaw gathered members because of substance abuse, some of the challenges the town was facing. I know Chris Santos was very involved with that, we had little subgroups off. I love the resurrection of that, and I love the title of that versus...
of that and I love the title of that versus more specifics. And I would, I really think it's important that it's a town committee that the school is a part of in order for it to affect the change that the town wide needs. And then I, if it were that, I mean, the inclusion and diversity committee could have a representative on that. So you could have, you could actually sort of make a cohesive plan and everybody sort of, all the major parties are embracing it.
And I think that's kind of what Brian and I were saying is we look at the composition of this committee, which we had kind of the foundation based off what Brian found. And then to your point, maybe there's representatives from other town committees that get appointed to it and maybe the M D I C is one of them. But the concern about, you know, going back to what Brian said, I got, I was very busy yesterday apparently. I had a text message from a citizen who was talking about, apparently there's now concern in town with some residents about the use of no place for hate because the parent organization, the Anti-Defamation League, has fallen under fierce criticism. And I'm reading this as a quote from a text message I received. "Was under fierce criticism first 2008 denial of the Armenian genocide and more recently for publicizing misinformation about Palestine." So the concern is that if the school continues to use no place for hate in the ADL, which personally I, you know, we've been using it and I did say that to this person, you know, that it has been in place in our schools for a few years now. So it's kind of news to me that this has all of a sudden become a hot button topic. But I did say that I would bring it to the committee, so this is me bringing it to the committee. I don't necessarily feel we need to change our course, but there is, there has been concerns voiced from the community about the use of their program. So I have done my due diligence in bringing it up to all of you.
All right. So what I'm hearing is kind of a change of direction here. Not trying to move forward with a warrant.
So, sorry, Mr. Chair, are we not going to do a warrant for town meeting?
That's what it sounds, it sounds like that what, what's being recommended is to find out what happened to Mashpee Cares, find out what their original charge was, which I don't, I mean, I can reach out to Mike and find out from him directly.
I mean, I, I, I know we still have, we still do have substance abuse problems. We still have, you know, we'd have to add to, to those things, you know? Racism would be one of them with everything that's been going on around. I'd have to research it. Obviously, you guys did your due diligence to see what it, what it was about. But nowhere on this committee are members of our community.
But that's what we're, but that's what we're proposing is we look at the composition of the, whatever that committee was. We look at what was the composition when the select board approved the creation of that advisory committee and if it needs to be modified.
Okay.
Because the town charter, the select board can create committees as needed and it doesn't necessarily need to go to town meeting with them to create a committee. If it's regular, there, there's certain parameters around it, but, I mean, they can create a committee. And if they already have one and it was never officially disbanded, technically that committee is still in effect and we could just resurrect it based on what our current needs are, make some modifications to the charge composition. And that's something that the select board would be able to approve.
It would be interesting to find because I, I really feel it was something that Ann Bradshaw started. And she pulled the different people into it. I don't know that it was anything that was specifically to the town. It should be. And then I have a, we were trying to come up with a name for the group and it was Meg Morrison, who just retired this year as a counselor, who said, how about Mashpee Cares? Everybody loved that. And it's so sort of an umbrella that we can do many things under.
Yes.
But I'm just leery of it. You know, the schools do a lot and I know that you don't necessarily think we do a lot, but there is a lot in place. And so this is another thing within the schools that we then have to get outside of schools where it should be outside of schools and we're part of it, supporting it.
And I think that's what Brian and I also talked about because we did talk about the youth commission, which somehow fell in our laps as well when it was supposed to be a town initiative and not a school initiative. And, you know, we do recognize that the schools are providing a great deal of services currently and will continue to do so. But I'm, I'm going back to what I said, the last meeting and the meeting before, this needs to be a town-wide initiative. And while yes, we're doing the homework for them, this is not something we will be maintaining in any way, shape, or form. This is something that whoever manages the town committees, whether it's the town clerk, whether it's the town manager's office, they're the ones who are gonna be making sure that all the players are notified and we are not. I, I do not want this being in our plate either because again, we, we have enough that we are focusing on.
I agree.
I, I think we're happy to do the homework and the legwork. And Brian took a huge chunk out of it. Thank you for that. But I think if we go this route, because the, the rest of the text message I got yesterday basically indicated that if we went forward with no-place-for-hate in a town meeting article, we would need to expect opposition on the floor of town meeting when it came to that article.
How, how would, I don't understand. Maybe that's the problem. I don't understand where people are saying, seeing that specific.
The agenda.
No place for hate.
The agenda.
As a problem. No, no. Like the wording, no place for hate.
It's because it's a branded, it is a branded like organization and term. It's like copyrighted or trademarked or whatever it is. It is a legitimate, like, it's an organization branched off of the ADL. So it's, it isn't.
So we'd be infringing on something.
No, we were planning, I thought, to utilize a lot of their services and what they do. I mean, we've had the peer leaders in the high school were ADL trained, correct?
Yes. And the two elementary schools just earned their no-place-for-hate designation, which required them to do three activities.
Right.
All very beneficial for students and building the school culture and improving safety and all of that. And you're supposed to have to do activities every year to maintain. So they have their banners that say, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four. I know that Principal Switzer already has three activities he's lining up for next year so that they can continue sort of growing. It, it's just the way we are currently in our society in terms of connections and things people have said so far.
Well, it seems to me that, you know, the more we discuss this and it's fine, it's evolving. And, you know, we should let it evolve and be open-minded to take a look at, you know, everything so that we can get to hopefully the best solution for our students and our families. You know, I can, I'll reach out to the select board, to the town manager, find out what's going on with Mashpee Cares, where, where it ended up. My guess is it may have gotten dissolved and integrated into a couple other committees, but I'm just guessing. So let me, and I can reach out to Mike Richardson.
Do we have the date for the deadline for submitting articles? What day is it?
July eighth.
Yeah. So I had talked to John Cotton, our liaison, to let him know what we were thinking about. And also requesting from him and the board that would we be allowed to have a placeholder on the warrant while we figure out exactly what it is we need? And he was amenable to that. Obviously, he's concerned that we want to have a better understanding of what it was exactly we were going to be requesting. But that would at least give us an opportunity to discuss that. That being said, it would require us to have basically a good mock-up of what the article is that we would be requesting. And it sounds like we're not in that place.
I think we're, I'd say at least eighty percent, if not ninety percent. I mean, Brian's, Brian's draft is pretty solid.
Well, that needs to be shared with really good.
What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, like as I took a, you know, first jab at it and sent it to Kathy, I think we were waiting to get feedback from Jay Marie Stevenson and stuff because to your point, Mr. Chair, is, you know, we don't really want to mesh the two. And they have some charges in there that might be, you know, more for them and not for this. Or I think we should really look at that because we want to respect the other committees and stuff as well.
Does, I just want to ask you, does the select board have a, a longer time to put a warrant on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do, they, they do. But...
So it would be nice to come from them.
Well, it could morph into that, but right now, it would be, you know, thus we're intending to request that they put it separately for us to do it as a department. We face the same deadline as petition articles. So all departments have to have it made by the eighth of July. And that doesn't mean it has to be final form, but it has to be representative of what we're requesting. And I, that's kind of what I thought we were gonna have tonight was a draft of what that was going to look like or discussion.
So all of the departments and petition articles have to be in by July eighth? Both the petition articles are?
And department.
So then what do the select board do? Because they don't put up individual select board articles.
Well, they can.
But they typically don't. Typically, they come from departments.
Generally speaking, that's correct. And so they, they will review all the department articles.
Yeah, and then recommend and vote to replace and recommend and all that comes out.
Right. And there are, there will be some placeholder articles. For example, if there's something in regard to this, who are, I'm just guessing, that would be kind of a placeholder until they have more specifics on it. But the selectman, if it comes through as a department article, does have the ability to remove it from the warrant. As I told you guys at the last meeting, the only way around that is you have to go in as a petition article. Petition articles go in without review. And as long as they're legal, they'll be on the warrant. So I, I guess, what does this group want to do?
Personally, I'd like a placeholder article. I feel that this is too important to be a petition article. I feel that the select board should be the sponsors of this article. That going back to the point that this is not a school item. We are just kicking it off. I mean, it, it impacts the school, but we've said this is a town item. I would, I would like, personally, I would like it to be a placeholder article. We don't have funds. We're not requesting funds. We're not requesting, you know, really anything that's going to impact a budget or impact anything other than people's time, maybe meeting location, but that could rotate even, you know, depending on what, who's a part of this committee. That, that's my thoughts.
No, I agree, Kathy. I think we, we should be able to, to at least let them know, hey, this is what we're planning on doing. This is what we're putting together. And we need their support.
Because it could be something that the school is requesting that the town establish a working group or a collaboration of many people in the community, not just people who work for the town, to create a better Mashpee. Mashpee Cares, wherever that title is or whatever, I think could come. But I, I think having the approval of the select board, having it come from them is more impactful.
So then I circle back to, where is that?
I have it right here. Would you like me to read Brian's draft of what we have? Or do you want me to forward it? I mean, I can forward it, but I can also read it now if you'd like to hear it. It's your...
I would, I would love to hear it.
Okay.
Ideally, and then if we could get it printed off, that would be even better.
Sure. All right. So it reads, "To see if the town will establish a no-place-for-hate town committee composed of at least one member of the select board, two members from the school committee, two members from the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, town manager and/or designate, superintendent of schools for designate, and at least one Mashpee Wampanoak tribe representative and/or designate, police chief and/or designate, fire chief and/or designate, and three members at large for community member and four students." I think that was one thing I meant to say, Brian. I, I think it should be community members and three students. I mean, although what number, I don't do the math. We probably want to make sure we stay under nine. "The committee shall also select a chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary. The objective shall be to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion as guiding principles for leadership, action, and decision-making. Support policies that promote equity and respect that avoid discrimination and bias. Advise the select board upon request on matters relating to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Raise our community's understanding and awareness on discrimination, racism, bigotry, sexism, fear, and hatred, and other forms of social injustice. Empower residents and officials to guide the community toward local principles that support social justice, equality, respect, and fairness. Respond appropriately to incidents of racism, bigotry, bullying, and hatred. Sponsor activities that explore the broad spectrum of issues related to hate and that promote an appreciation of diversity. Work to create a truly inclusive community and designate the town of Mashpee as a no-place-for-hate community or take any other actions there to, related there to." Like I said, I, I didn't really...
I did that while I was at Harvard.
But I really didn't have much to add to that other than I think it should be community members and students. Like I think...
And we have to take out the no-place-for-hate.
Well, that's something to discuss. You know, if we go the other route of Mashpee Cares, yes, but I still think we need to look at what framework. I do think there's going to be, maybe that is the financial ask now that I'm saying, about the training for this committee. I, I do think there needs to be opportunities for trainings of sorts that will help spread this throughout the town.
I like what Patty said where, you know, when we said Mashpee Cares, creating a better Mashpee. I think that'll pop out of people, honestly, especially with everything that's been going on and everything that our community's been dealing with in the last month. But I do, I do agree with that. That was amazing, Brian. Great job.
Yeah, I didn't really have much to add.
One, one question that I have, and I would like to see that printed out if we can get it printed out, so I can take a quick second look at it. But one of the things, when we say respond appropriately, expand on what that means.
I think that charge would be up to the committee on how they come up with plans or initiatives, programming, so on and so forth.
I think in addition to what Brian just said, I think it also would be potentially as an advisory committee, making a recommendation to the select board for policy on how the town responds to incidents that fall under that, that purview or that, fall into those buckets. Because while the school was doing one thing, there were other people in town who could have also provided information as well. Yet all of it fell on the school's responsibility to provide that information. I think, you know, this committee could potentially affect policy that would help the school, help any department in town really when faced with these types, like the treasures department. I mean, you, you're faced with these horrific acts of hate and just disgusting behavior. And you don't always have the tools, you know? Like sometimes you have tools and you can go a certain, to a certain point. And, you know, you, you almost feel, I, I don't know about you guys, I felt very isolated during that process of what happened in early June. And I feel like this committee would have the potential to help give the toolkit that is needed to this town so desperately to really be able to have a voice and say, okay, this happens, how do we communicate that? What is, what is the process? What is, you know, and taking into account all the different layers with, you know, each incident's going to be an individual thing. But having just a framework at least to work under that this goes here, this goes there kind of, again, just initial thoughts. I'm sure there's more deeper discussion to be had, but that's how I envision it. And I think Brian captured that in that. And it might be vague language, but I think the vague language, and I'm assuming town council will have to review it anyway. They usually send it to town council, petition articles... Petition articles go to town council for review anyways, usually in a good system. So that vague language could be beneficial. That's how I see it.
Did I understand two members from the school committee plus an appointment from the superintendent? So the school would have one-third of the representation on the committee?
It does list two school committee members and the superintendent.
How many select board did it list?
It only lists one select board and town manager.
But there's two for the inclusion diversity.
But there are, yes.
Plus town manager.
Plus police and fire chief.
But that's stuff that we could talk about. I don't think.
I mean, I would like personally to see some representation from mental health.
Does it give them service or something?
It was not.
You know, and if we don't want this to be viewed as a school, um, organization, you know, the fact that we have three representatives, I think, makes it look, from my viewpoint, makes it look like a school group. I do like having students or youth represented and at the table, along with having parents at the table. I think it would also help having someone who, maybe it's human services, I don't know. This appears to me would need to have someone with some expertise to lead that group versus just having, you know, someone pulled out a hat to lead it in order for it to be effective. That's just kind of my initial, initial thoughts. The other part of it is, I'm still struggling with some of the overlap and figuring out, okay, we're creating another committee or maybe we were reinvigorating a committee that is already there. Reinvigorating one is easier, I think, than creating a new one. But I'm trying to figure out what lanes that, this group is in, what lanes the other committee is in.
I, I, just my two cents, feel like if you have the people closest to the work involved. So you would have the town manager, but maybe not a select board rep. You would have the superintendent, but maybe not the school committees. That work, you'd have police chief, fire chief. You'd have all the components of the people that are most hands-on with all of what they see in here and have to deal with. And then they would collectively obviously report back with the select board if there's something that needs to be done townwide. It could be something that's on everybody's agenda on a regular basis to update. I think if you get too cumbersome of a group, you can't find a time, first of all, when they can all meet and then be productive. So I, I don't know. That's just my.
Yeah, because you're, you're at thirteen, if you take off the select board and the school committee person, you're at thirteen, which.
You want kids on there.
You want. We didn't have a number.
It's three things high. I just want.
I almost want to say two adults and two kids.
Yeah, that's why it was three members at large to be comprised of that.
Oh, I got you.
I feel like also as a school committee, like Eve is still a part of us. So if we wanted to give her that seat, we could. I think that the other thing was that it was drafted in that way as a designate, because if the superintendent doesn't want to go in there, then they can send Jamie Curly. Or to your point, Dawn, you know, Mr. Chair, if the town manager doesn't want to do it, they could put the board of health or whoever their designate is. I mean, that's common practice with any state board or anything else where it's, you know, the secretary of state or their designate, whoever they feel like should be the most appropriate person for that. This was just a draft. I, I mean, I think that if we wanted to talk about it, there's nothing prohibiting us from at least taking a vote on it. We can pull it at any time. We have until now, until October, right up until a town meeting on the floor, we can amend this. So I think that, you know, we should follow up on the Mashpee Cares. I think it's easier for us to just go after something rather than reinvent the wheel. But I think that if we want to have it as a placeholder, we should at least vote on something and come to some kind of agreement to at least put forward something and pull it or, you know, work towards amending that with the respective committees up until now, until October.
And I think as it goes through the process of getting finalized, I worry about the or designate part on various sides. Not necessarily on our side because I, but if you wanted to have the strength and power it needs, it needs to be the people that make decisions. Because otherwise, they appoint someone else, it may not be viewed as a priority.
You could do town manager or assistant town manager, police chief or captain, you know, fire chief or deputy fire chief. You know, one of them.
Yes.
Type of thing, instead of, except, you know.
What would this committee be titled again?
I think if we remove the note, if we take the advice of the constituents who express concerns, and I don't know if Brian is okay with it and the rest of the committee is okay with it, but I kind of liked, you know, if we go with Mashpee Cares, what did you, you said something else, Kelly.
Mashpee Cares, creating a better Mashpee.
That's more like a tagline. But if we just go with Mashpee Cares, then maybe creating a better Mash feels like their little.
So maybe this is Mashpee Cares two point O?
Many people won't remember Mashpee Cares one point O.
I didn't know it existed.
I didn't either.
I mean, the youth committee stuff I know only because I sat on it back in nineteen ninety-six and I remember that, but.
I vaguely remember something about it, but that's. All right, so we're talking about maybe a Mashpee, a Mashpee Cares committee.
Town will establish a Mashpee Cares town committee, comprised of at least, of at least one member. So we're gonna, I guess that's where we're getting into. So if we remove the select board member and the school committee members, do we still think two members of the Mashpee Invers, uh, Inclusion and Diversity Committee makes sense, or should that be one?
Sorry, one.
One. Town manager and/or assistant town manager.
Sure.
Superintendent of schools and/or assistant superintendent of schools?
I don't think we should leave it.
Oh, or, okay. So town manager or assistant town manager, superintendent of schools or assistant superintendent of schools. One member of the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe. Police chief or deputy chief?
I don't know if there's a deputy chief.
I don't think we have a deputy chief right now, do we?
I think it's just a, I think it's captain.
I think we do.
Yeah.
And not as fire.
No, police. Yeah.
It's captain.
He's a captain. He's a captain, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a police chief or the captain.
That one, yeah. I feel like that one should just stay at police chief. Not gonna lie.
Yeah, but unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, a chief car line can't attend and there's no representative for the police department.
Brian, on the tribal one, could it say a member of the council or no?
Yeah, I don't think.
Because I feel like that gets, that's pretty powerful.
I mean, you could just say the police department, right?
I think it should be the chief.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We could do it that way, the police chief or his designate, because he may find that there's somebody better.
I just don't want it to, I guess, I want it who's, I don't feel it should be the SRO, and I guess that's my worry. I want it to be someone who's not in the schools. I want it to be someone who's in the town at large.
And I'm wondering if the community, is it sergeant, detective, that's the community liaison officer?
I still feel strongly about police chief. I feel strongly about chiefs being involved.
Okay.
That's my personal thought on it, just because I feel like they lend a certain gravitas to it in the sense that it's, you know, a little bit more important than their.
Yeah, so we could leave that as the police chief.
And fire chief.
And fire chief.
And then, so that's town manager, super tribe PD, so that's one, two, three, four, five. So we either want seven or nine.
I would go with nine because then you can do the two students and the two parents.
Okay, sorry, the Mashpee.
I think you also need human services, so. Where are you, where are you putting that?
Well, it falls under the town manager or the assistant town manager.
Right, but we're not putting it as a meeting.
Well, I'm. Substances task force, that Gail Wilson, who is the human resources director. That's her committee that meets monthly, which is very much focused on, you know, substance.
That would be seven if you include someone from one of those two.
Could you include the M I D C?
That's, that's going to be the seventh. So then that would be like one parent, one student, though, to get to nine. Anything over nine, I don't think you're gonna have a functional committee, and even nine is a tricky number for a functional committee, but.
And that's not just a side. Whoever's on this committee is going to gather input. That's their job, is representing the year. It's representing the, you know, the town hall, the human services, the whatever. So I think we have to remember that too, because include, um, running a committee, you have to balance representation with function. And I think anything over nine, you're not functioning.
And even nine gets tricky.
I'm just trying to figure out, though, within that group, who would lead that committee? Well, I know, but.
No, I made that up.
In order for it to be effective.
I mean, does that have to be in the warrant, though? I guess that's.
No, it doesn't have to be in the warrant. I mean, it should be, in theory, one of those individuals or the committee could have. Well, it needs to be someone from that group. And I'm not sure you're gonna get, I'm not sure you're gonna get someone that's gonna do that.
You have that little faith in our town officials that they won't step forward for something that our town clearly needs to lead a committee?
And they would then.
Because that's kind of what you're saying, or what I'm hearing at least. I'm trying to be optimistic and Pollyanna the heck out of this because I'd like to think our town manager's invested in the state of our town. I'd like to think that our police and fire chiefs also would like to see a reduction of these types of phone calls and instances and having to make public statements to news and social media about these various horrific things that have been going on in our town and find ways to reduce these instances. So I guess part of me is trying to have some faith that someone would step forward to lead this group and, and make it a productive group.
I guess my only thing to that would be that, that's why it was drafted that way, to say that there will be a chair or vice chair or secretary for them to kind of appoint amongst themselves. I mean, the town seal committee, when that was a petition as an article, it was kind of like, okay, well, the town manager took it upon theirselves, and the town took it upon itself to comprise it of that. It made a select board kind of the chair of that, which was kind of their direction. It was a kind of a vision of the original petitioner, just because I was that person.
But it all turned out well. But you worked together and it all worked out.
Yeah, so I mean, we could take it out, but.
I think Brian's right, though, in leaving it. I feel like it's the committee's choice, but.
I mean, at town meeting, you know how it is. I mean, somebody can pull, pull in, we can amend it and have this debate all night.
Heck, we could go and amend it.
Two A M. Then you might decide the fourth, if all this other stuff plays out and you don't need it.
All right.
I think we have enough for a placeholder personally.
I agree.
That's coming from someone who writes placeholder articles.
I agree with you, Kathy.
I think there's enough there.
It's probably enough to at least hold on to and have that next stage of discussion with, that ultimately will come with the select board. So, all right.
I'll make the edits to your draft and get it. I can't email anything right now.
Yeah, I can even pull it up.
I can pull it up, but that's not it.
Yeah, we'll need to vote. We don't have, we don't have that on here. That's an oversight, so. And now we've changed it to the Mashpee Cares.
Mashpee Cares Town Committee? Is that what we're doing? Or just Mashpee Cares?
Mashpee Cares Town Committee. Or Mashpee Cares Committee. I don't think we need town, but Mashpee Cares.
But the way it was here on the agenda, establishment of a town of Mashpee, no place for hate committee, I think having town of Mashpee in there is sending a message as to where this is.
So town of Mashpee.
So it's a town Mashpee Cares Committee? You see what I'm saying? It sounds a little.
Well, if Mashpee Cares is in quotes, it might read better, but establishment of a town, of the town Mashpee Cares Committee.
All right, do you have a motion to add to the agenda, vote on the Mashpee Cares Committee?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to add to the agenda. The, to vote for the establishment of the town of Mashpee, quote unquote, Mashpee Cares Committee.
Do you have a second for that agenda item?
Second.
Any further discussion on that, adding that to the agenda? Hearing done. Kelly?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes on its unanimous. All right, now we have it on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to submit to the select board a placeholder article establishing the town of Mashpee Mashpee Cares Committee with the discussed edits for review by the committee. I'm trying to think if there's anything else I might need to add to that, but I think that covers it. Did you get that?
No, you did great. Personal keyboarding in my school best class I ever took. Okay, so I, I want me to read it back to you?
Please.
Motion by Ms. Lewis to submit to the select board a placeholder article establishing the town of Mashpee Mashpee Cares Committee with discussed edits for review by the committee? I don't know.
I don't think I know.
So with discussed edits to enter for the October two thousand twenty-four town meeting warrant? Yes. Is that right?
Sounds good to me.
Oh, second.
You picked the right thing. Sorry.
I would just suggest that we amend the motion to include the responsibilities and designees outlined.
Well, I feel like that's in the draft article, but if you want it specifically stated, I am fine with that amendment to the motion.
I'm not, so you're gonna have to. The amendment, the amendment is to make sure that what she has in the writing is actually in the motion.
Right, in regard to the responsibilities and the.
So the committee charge and composition of said committee.
Including.
The committee charge and said composition.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Of the committee. I can repeat it one more time.
Where's it going, what you said, though?
Um, can you read it back to me?
Yeah, submit to the select board a placeholder article establishing the town of Mashpee Mashpee Cares Committee.
Comma, including.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
The committee charge.
Yeah.
And composition of said committee.
I don't think I need those said committees because they're, the committee, they're of.
Yeah, sure.
With discussed edits for the October twenty twenty-four town meeting warrant, second amendment.
Good job.
All right, further discussion.
Just, Mr. Chair, I know Dan is here. He's a member of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. So I don't know if he had anything or if it would be appropriate for us to, like, say something if he had comments on the article or.
You joined late, but hopefully you got the gist of what was being discussed. You joined late, but I thought hopefully you got the gist of what was being discussed.
I apologize. My mistake was thinking the meeting started.
Can you just introduce yourself and the committee that you're representing?
Yes, I'm with, uh, my name is Dan Cufferman. I'm with the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. And from what I understand of what I just missed and the vote you just took, it's about forming what was gonna be a no place for hate committee, but it sounds like maybe it's Mashpee Cares Committee, which sounds very similar to the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. And while we would love to to have the increased bandwidth and and help and leadership and support that we could get from this committee, I can't see the town supporting two committees. I don't, it it seems like a a conflict or a waste of resources to have two committees with very similar purposes.
Mister Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Because he missed part of that. So part of our earlier conversation before you joined us was, um, we're going to submit this as a placeholder upon we we've, Brian found the Mashpee Cares Committee, which had been established back in like twenty eleven, somewhere in twenty eleven, twenty fourteen, somewhere in that range. And the concern was raised by us that there is overlap with what your committee's work is and what would be the difference. So the intention is to submit this as a placeholder so that we are within the timeline for the warrant articles and the timing of the closing of town meeting warrant, um, but also to review further that your committee's charge and what the Mashpee Cares Committee's charge was and see if there's differences, if there are overlaps. Um, this one is almost, I don't wanna say a higher level, but I think involving more town officials as opposed to citizens. Um, so I think that was kind of our other difference that we could see right off the bat, but we did share your concern that it is overlapping work, which we do not want to do. But we do feel that this is something that won't be the school committees per se. It will be the towns committee. We're just kind of kickstarting the process of creating this and whether that means revise, proposing revised a revised charge to yours and changing membership of your committee, you know, or or what is the best route? I think that was kind of where we left it was we wanted to look at the charges of the two committees and compare, contrast, see where there's gaps, see where there's places to improve or or edit. Um, and then move forward, but we wanted to make sure that we at least had something for town meeting warrant, um, in case we did have to go that route to establish a new committee.
Okay, and if I could just thank you for that and also let you know that our chair, Marie Stevenson, happens to be out of state. I was sitting in for her. Sorry, Marie. Thank you. I I propose to working with you on this.
So by going this this route of, um, submitting it as a school committee, um, department, um, item, it will allow us then to have further discussions and with your group, with the, uh, select board, uh, to refine that and if see where it ultimately goes. But as we're all aware here, um, you know, there's a very near deadline in order to get this submitted. So going the placeholder route at least enables us to have, uh, that avenue open for now. Okay?
Great, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Well, we have a motion still on the table.
Yeah, we haven't voted.
Right. Any further discussion? All right. Well, I hope so down, so.
I got the motion. I got the second. I can count the others, so.
You can vote really small.
No, I'm doing great. I'm so proud of me.
Just the one other thing, uh, so we if we move for vote to move forward with this article, is it still the committee's wishes to reach out to the select board in regard to the former, um, Mashpee Cares, about the former Mashpee Cares Committee?
Yes.
Any other information on that also?
Yes.
I just wanna be clear, whoever heard you here. All right. If there are no other items in regard to this particular motion, let's go ahead and take a vote. Uh, Kelly?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right, it's unanimous. All right, in your packet was also a copy of the, um, Mashpee Public School Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan. I don't know, people have had a chance to take a look at that if they had any, you know, particular questions. We had talked about at one point, um, having our council come in and do a presentation on the laws and regulations. This would be the same presentation, I believe, that is presented to the school administration.
Yeah, we talked about that being recorded specifically to also be able to share out with parents and post.
I I did have one question. I'm trying to remember. I feel like it's been a while since I read this. And I don't know if it's something we would build into this policy, but, um, like an anonymous reporting for students, like not, we do have that.
We certainly have text line, QR code and.
That's what I that's what I thought and I I just wanted clarification. I vaguely remembered it, but, um, I guess the piece of educating the students too that's there, that they can, in that way, everything that hap, like if they feel something has happened, they have a way to report it. It might not necessarily fall under the bullying, but at least it can be addressed. You know what I mean?
So we had, and we can do this again, um, is it okay? We had Mrs. Brooks, um, our Director of Instructional Technology, providing every time when a child opened their Chromebook, uh, not every child, like not the Coons kids, but older, a pop-up came up that said, the first time, if you have, you know, see bullying or whatever, this is what you can, this is where you can, so that every kid got that information. That was when we first rolled out securely and then she also went into classrooms and did presentations for the students on where it was, how to access it. However, that was a couple of years ago, so we can certainly do that again, um, very easily.
Because again, the parent I spoke to yesterday had no knowledge of that and their students said they didn't know either and they were looking for a way to report it. And I was like, I'm pretty sure, but let me double check and.
But if they were at Quashnet, which is what it sounded like, they would have been to be home to have gotten that information.
Maybe we need to look at that.
No, no, I'm saying they wouldn't have been in the the class where this training went on, is what I'm saying. Not that they shouldn't. I'm saying they didn't. Because they would have been in third grade or or in fourth grade or whatever, second grade. So we can make sure that goes in annually, that Ms. Brooks does something in classrooms annually for.
For every.
Yeah, I don't know about Coons.
I'd say.
There's kids that are saying it's first and second grade.
But they don't know how to access it on Chromebook is what I'm saying. I think we need to teach them how to tell that there's something going on.
So maybe like have that basket in the room where you can write it out and.
Yeah, okay.
In the bucket.
Our counselors at Coons actually do that already. They have a whole system that really works well. I think at Quash, I think we could get it down to third grade.
Yeah.
And they could understand.
I think though to back to the agenda topic though, the presentation on the laws, I feel like that needs to be incorporated into a presentation to let people know, which again, we have done it, but maybe we really need to be beating this drum repeatedly.
Well, I think we have student assemblies and it's brought up in reminders, but it comes down to, I think, having a classroom teacher pointed out, like the the kids have a drop down of all the different things they access and having it published or, and we do have posters about it as well, but I think particularly younger kids, they really respond to the teacher and making sure that they're given those reminders that it's there.
We all, I don't know if people understa, I I've looked into this very intensely only because of personally what I went through with my child. But just so everybody knows, the Mass General Law that is stated, it is not considered bullying under Mass General Law until it's happened to the same child by the same child three times. So you can have a child that bullies and antagonizes every single child in our school system twice before it is ever considered bullying.
But that's why I think that dropdown option and the ability to report will allow the administrators, the teachers, the principals, building staff to identify when a student is being targeted, whether it's not necess, it might not necessarily fall under the legal bullying because again, that kickstarts this whole other process with DESSY and with it's it's a whole system. But having that ability to report allows the building staff to say, wait, you know, little Timmy's got six different things here where his name's popped up and whether he's done it to six different kids or he's getting it from six different kids. It's it's there and it's something you cannot ignore and say.
So who's.
Not that anyone's ignoring anything, but I'm just saying it makes it a little bit more, here's a pattern.
So who who's the person that is when Timmy goes in and says, you know, Tommy and Joey and so and so have been picking on me for three, like, who is the person that sees that? Is that the principal?
Assistant principal and assistant principal.
Okay.
Potentially counselors as well. It depends. Securely does all of our alerts, so, um, we have different, um, areas of access for different alerts that come in, um, and generally it's always the principal and assistant principal and then maybe counselors as well, depending on how it comes in and what the.
And how do we, as as an administration, do you guys track that also?
Yes, oh, yes, every single one.
And how do we as a school committee see that?
You could see it in the aggregate to say we received four tips this month. That would be the extent of it.
Plus then you're walking that line of operational versus, you know, like that that's kind of.
Well, just to keep up, like with everything that's been going on, these parents have been telling us.
I think getting the aggregate might be a helpful addition to a superintendent's report out, but I think on on the other side of that coin, we do need to, you know, trust that the systems are in place. It's maybe how do we utilize them more effectively? I think is where I'm seeing it personally, because like I knew we had, but I I don't know that the students know, to your point, you know, who's, who is, who are they going to? If they're not doing it in the computer system or if they are doing it in the computer system, who are they, who's following up? How is that? And maybe that's again, part of the report we get or the presentation we get of, here are the laws, like here's one presentation on the laws, the policy, DESSY's rules, all of these rules that we have to work within. Here's how our school handles it and the the programs that we use, that the staff have been trained on, that teachers are, I mean, because you gotta figure in like second grade, little Suzie and little Amara are having a fight and again, I'm pulling names out of thin air, so no relation to anybody I know, but you know, Mrs. Jones sees it, again, making names up here, not the Mrs. Jones. But she goes in and I would assume puts it in and records it, you know, like and and.
It depends. If it's an interpersonal conflict, no.
Yeah.
Because that's, so it's a much bigger conversation. So I do think that the year, that's, the community needs to know the laws. I mean, as Kelly, you just said, you did a lot of research and realized, oh, there's a lot more to this than somebody saying they're bullying or getting bullied. That's one. And then two, operationally, how do the Mashpee Public Schools, what does it look like at Coons? What does it look like at Quash? And what does it look like at the middle case school? I I think those are really good things to share with the with the community. Now stop talking now, so I realize I just.
I think that, um, when you look at this, I mean, I think there's some loopholes in here that we can probably try to tighten up. Um, because if we wanna make it a requirement that, um, the staff on page, um, ten, when it's one, um, item one, reporting by faculty and staff, a faculty or staff member will report immediately the principal or designated. Now, will versus shall, I mean, that's actually saying you're required, but I feel like sometimes if that's where we're missing it, um, I'm not sure if that's happening. I'm not sure if the staff is, you know, and that's stuff that you would obviously know, with them going to the principals or something like that, because, I mean, we kind of could hear things maybe. I mean, some people might witness it, whether they are parents or they're, um, you know, faculty. I mean, they're all teachers and faculty, but at the end of the day, I feel like some of that and then what would happen if they conduct a report, because all of our teachers are mandated reporters. So if we know that, I guess that would be my kind of concern to see if there was anybody that's fallen through the cracks that, I mean, I know we wanna talk about the youth. I think that sometimes we have a little bit more, I won't say power, but a little bit more authority over our our staff and our employees and stuff and make sure that they're adhering to the policies and procedures that we have in place. Um, so those kind of things I look at, you know, I mean, obviously you don't wanna make a, you know, I don't know.
I I would just have to say that I feel pretty strongly that our staff, when they are aware of a situation between, or they witness something, they do take action. The work that we've done with police warren, do I think that we can all get better at our skill set of sort of marking the moment and in trying to be, um, more proactive? Yes, but I don't believe there's a single staff member who does not take steps to make something better for a student and to address when they know about it. I mean, obviously things can happen in classrooms. Kids can be, you know, pretty, you know, they can be not noticeable in some of their things. So I think originally when you talked about a little bit more bystander training, I think bystander training, active bystanders for kids and also for staff. I remember years ago it was Bridgewater, was it Mark?
That's who I was, I was told to look into Bridgewater. They they told me to go.
And they've done trainings with kids. It's still very hard and it's very hard for adults with students as well as with their peers to call out and, let me hear and see something that's not right.
Yeah, the the parent I spoke with yesterday definitely had indicated the Bridgewater one and I hadn't had a chance to look into the program she told me to look into. But she also would like it. She she advocated strongly, you know, for parents to feel that it's being done, but to see the staff go through it as well as the students, like, and make sure that it is an ongoing, you know, whether it's a biannual training or refresher, but making sure it's something that.
So the staff do an annual training on this? They have to, it's required. Every single staff member who comes in through our through our doors, including substitutes, every substitute, every year does an annual training. We pay them to come in Au- in August. If they get onboarded in anytime later in the year, they have to do those trainings before they can start.
And these, this has proven the point that there's people who do not know this stuff is, and that's.
That's what I think I was saying last month is marketing's the wrong word. It's communication.
But it is communication and I I think, you know, again, tightening up, like Brian said, this is bullying stuff, but I'm looking at, you know, obligation to notify others at the bottom of page ten. This is specific to bullying. It's not necessarily specific to incidents or personal conflict, like maybe there needs to be some tweaking around that communication policy so that, you know, maybe that's another area we need to start looking into as well to make sure that the communication policy is tightened up and there are no loopholes or holes or whatever you wanna call it. Um, I think, you know, we do a pretty decent job. I do think, you know, as with everything in life, there's room for improvement.
Well, one thing that I noted on, uh, page one is that there was a community forum on the development of the original plan back in two thousand and ten. Seems to me that, you know, after four years plus later, it probably would make sense to have another community forum. See if there are tweaks that need to be, um, made to this policy. I would be definitely in favor of doing that once the school.
If that's going to happen, I think it's a great idea that our council is there because even just changing the word from will to shall, this is not our language. This is DESSY's real language. And so I would just urge the committee to do any of that, have council there when the parents come and say, I wanted to say this, I want to say that, because maybe we can do that and maybe we can cancel.
Well, maybe it would make sense if we had council come in and do the presentation and then after the presentation, open it up as a forum, uh, to get feedback. So everyone's on kind of the same page. And we can gather information in regard to the effectiveness of our policies. Does that make sense?
Yep.
All right.
I just ask that, you know, whoever comes to that, this is given to every, everybody should have a copy of this in there and to read along with and make notes on them.
Right, and if there are handouts from the council, that those should be, um, readily available.
You said a lot of, there's a lot, and I get, you know, people look through this, they they. I didn't know what Mass General Law 71, Section 370 was until I actually read it. So maybe somewhere it should say, "This is what the law states." Maybe there's an additional page at the end of it that says, you know, "This is what this law says."
Just wait till you get your book from the school committee, the laws of Mash...
I have it, it's very heavy. I, it's, it's very heavy. I have that, yeah.
Well, I guess the question that the chair would like to put on the table then is, you know, is there a date that people are thinking about when we could hold that sort of presentation in open forum? What do we think would work? Obviously, I don't know that we would get a groundswell of participation here in the summer, but I think early in the fall would probably be good.
I'm...
I think the early fall might be difficult with sports.
I'm going to push back on, I think, August. I think it needs to be before school starts.
When's the first day of school, the 20th?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, first day, yeah.
Okay.
It's a retreat.
That's...
Seventh?
August seventh.
We have a school committee meeting scheduled for the 21st. I'm not saying it's a go with that, I'm just telling you...
Yeah, I think it should be so.
I'm not sure you'll give parents here in August.
I know.
If you tied it to sports, we're already tying the Power School registration to sports.
I'd like to not tie it to sports, if that's possible.
No, I know, I know, I'm just, if you tie it to something that they...
But I just know that the first, you know, the first week of school is kind of stressful. What about...
Do we...
That, that end of September, after the open houses or the parent, teacher nights without, not what you would call them here, but...
Open.
Open house. Yeah.
Then you could, you could promote at that, and then hopefully get a good turnout.
So the final open house this year will be Thursday, September 26th, so we looked at Wednesday, October 2nd as an option.
Wait, Wednesday?
No, okay.
No, you said Wednesday, right?
I did, October 2nd.
We're good, yeah, we're, sorry, I mean, for some reason I heard Tuesday.
So if you want, I'll hold on the district calendar as a hold to do community...
And that would probably, that'd give council enough time to get everything.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, that can...
October 2nd, is that right?
Pull it together, Brian, is that not a hard, a hard known...
Oh, you're Wednesday, isn't it?
That's fine, I don't have a meeting that day before I leave, I probably...
Mr. Bor, how's your day then? I was just going to say, though, I think that's a great time, because we have to, you know, submit every two years, our updated, doesn't change a lot, but that will give enough time to gather information, so if there's more tweaking to do to this document, because we do it every year in December, well, not every year, but most of the last few years around that time, so it would be a good time.
So, so tendatively, we're shooting for October 2nd for presentation and then a open forum. Okay.
And I don't think anything else should squeeze into that.
Nope, I think it should be...
That should be completely by itself.
Agreed.
All right, I, I will reach out to council and let them know that that's the date that we're planning right at this point. All right. That being accomplished. We talked about doing a needs assessment. I'm not sure if we've got any more form around what that would entail, hope?
I think that was my idea last time, and my recommendation was after the forum and the training from attorneys to parents, then doing a needs assessment.
Okay.
Because my thought was that the training would eliminate some of the challenges, I think, that you all are hearing from, but maybe not. But let's give them that at first, before we find out where the gaps are. That was my initial thought, like last night when we talked.
Okay, so after the forum.
Mr. Chair, I think the items that do fall under this item, the topic, the subject matter, would be a great draft agenda for that community forum to address all of these, even for the plan, or for the other next steps as well.
I think that is a good idea.
Okay. All right.
And as soon as, I think it'd be beneficial to, to give, give the public and the parents, you know, as much notice as possible. Get it out there as soon as we can, hey, October 2nd, 5:30, Quashnet Library.
We just got to confirm anything with town councils.
This is what's going on, so once we confirm that deed with council, there's nobody here, so, you know. Two weeks ago, it was...
I mean, is Sarah May back?
Sarah might be back.
Alyssa Safe-Forey is the council who does this type of thing for...
So she would present, if Sarah's not back.
And I'm thinking we would do it in a high school auditorium, it's actually...
Yeah, that actually might be a better place, because it's bigger.
Well, yes.
Oh, I hear you.
And I want the screen not, you know, little, but like we need a big screen.
We'll make sure baby stadiums provided, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's what Mrs. Bor's going to do that night.
That's what she's doing, that's what she's doing in her retirement.
Blacky costs a nice high school kid.
And if you can't get that, you got it.
Make sure we have snacks.
Yes. That's, that's what she'll do, she'll bake.
The only caveat to that, if we do it at the high school, we'll have to have remote microphones if we're going to truly do a forum.
Oh, yeah, but we do that for the soup conference.
Okay.
So that, so that's, Tom Roney has it down.
Okay.
No problem.
I know it's you who can run the soundboard too.
You do, that's...
Are there any other next steps that we want to take that need to be on the agenda for the next meeting, other than probably a follow-up in regard to Mashpee Cures?
Where are we at? So we have the DEI analyst position, do we have? And we have it posted?
It's posted.
When does that position post and close, do we know?
I'll have to double-check, there's not a ton of applicants in there, but I do think it's due to close soon.
I guess that was my question, you know, make sure we're moving forward on that, and kind of figure out how to integrate that, that position into this big picture, because it does, I think, tie into it, I think there's data that they're going to look at that will help, you know, strengthen our policies around this topic.
I got a question about that job, that job description. Who, who comes up with those type of things, like...
The job descriptions?
Yeah.
The leadership team did that one in conjunction with sort of neighboring similar positions. So we don't start from scratch, but we make it Mashpee, and it was the leadership team that developed the, that position.
We did, as a committee, look at it.
And you did look at the job description, because it was the other position, so the school committee has to approve after we've drafted it.
School, okay, so, and, and so in the beginning, when you first came, came up with this position?
Yes, it came to the school committee.
Okay.
It actually, it started...
Before the budget, actually, yeah, it was...
It was because we went to the November conference, the joint conference of MASC and MASSS, there was, one of the keynote speakers was talking about certain positions every district should have in order to advance their DEIV, like, work.
I, I just...
And it kind of came from that.
You would, you had approved it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think in regards to next steps, once we do hear back from town council, I think it would be good for us to...
School council.
Yeah, not school council, I was thinking about the student advisory council too. Make sure they're included, but once we hear from our council, our legal council, if we could create a flyer or something, I think that that would be good outside of the superintendents, that we can share it everywhere, with the print some to, you know, disperse it in the community. I think as well as maybe a formal invitation or letter, whether that comes from you as the chair of the board, it comes from the superintendent, to kind of invite, you know, the leadership and, you know, the people that we would expect, the people that were kind of also named on this committee that we kind of want to create, to make sure that they also receive a formal invitation and invite from us.
I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong thing, to the, to what?
Town officials.
To the forums.
Invite them to the forums.
To the forums, yes.
Okay, that's, I wasn't the right track, okay.
Yeah, it's still under this.
Yeah, I think that's going to do it. I think the more people we have from our community, teachers, students, I mean, I would...
Faith-based leaders.
Yeah, anybody.
Get the, get that.
The boy scout leader, the girl scout leader, the, you know, these are all people within our community that help us raise our children into law-abiding citizens.
We should be reaching out to all the rec coaches.
Yeah, I mean...
Little League, basketball, soccer, tennis, all of them, like, let's get them all, and...
All right. Sounds good. Anything else under this particular item for today?
Not for today.
Go ahead, you good? All right. Next item, items the chair did not reasonably know in advance.
That's a good question, don't it?
Yes.
Are you his chair, so we have Dr. Thompson with us, and he is officially with us. Not everybody reads the Mashpee Enterprise, are you going to send a statement as the chair to our entire staff, introducing or knowing? Because I feel like, I know, but I don't really, more your place to do, and I just...
Yeah, what, what's... Once we conclude things, hopefully tonight, I'll issue a memo to... Or we'll do a press release, but be an internal memo to everyone clarifying expectations.
Well, I just think, I mean, I want everyone to know he's...
Yeah, people are not...
Have you hired anyone?
And the principals don't know, and I said, "Well, there was an article in the Enterprise," and I was told all the people over...
They didn't watch Mashpee TV?
There was no, there was no official communicate, typically there's an official communication of an appointment, and that has not yet happened.
And people are very anxious about that.
And I was told only people over 60 read the Enterprise, which I, offense to.
I do, because I read the Enterprise. No, to the, I think you should go out to the staff, to the parents, to...
I guess, a formal notice of...
And sooner rather than later would be great, because people are very, it's been a very, very long process, that staff in particular are feeling lots of angst about, and then we want them to feel good really.
Yeah, it would have been nice to have that go out before the Enterprise article, but...
Well, we should, we should be in a position to be able to send something out tomorrow. Okay, to, to the world. All right.
We got a plane moving on.
Thank you.
Make it go across.
Banner, yeah, we'll get a good banner.
We can put it on the... I was going to say, it's going to all sign.
Picture.
Yep.
I know, but the picture, that's a little harder, but yeah.
Put the student pictures up.
And in quotation marks, picture to come.
No, I, I know.
I'm joking, I didn't need the picture, I was just saying that.
Let me take one of them, right there.
Motion to adjourn, are we done?
No.
They're awesome.
We're not done here? Oh, that's right, this.
Oh, are they, yeah, oh, I think, okay, sorry. We all get those, we all get that.
So, it becomes the...
Sorry.
Moving on with the agenda, next item of business is an executive session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the public meeting and enter into executive session pursuant to Mash General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 2, to conduct strategy sessions in participat- I'm sorry, in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene and open session.